I'm going to try and get the meeting started for this evening, please. If everybody can take a seat. Welcome. Hello? Thanks for being here. First order of business, we need to elect a moderator for this evening's festivities. So Julie Hannam has been kind enough to offer her assistance. And what I need to do is, we need a nomination. Nomination and a second, please.
Second.
Second, all those in favor, raise your hand or your card. If possible, I know they're around your necks, right?
Oh, yeah.
Put your hands down, please, all those opposed. Seeing none, I'm going to ask the chairman of our Board of Selectmen to cast one nomination and vote in favor of that, and we'll get going with the meeting.
I am nominate and cast one vote in favor of Julie Hannam as our temporary moderator for this evening.
A second, please.
Second.
Once again. All those in favor? Thank you. All those opposed? I'm assuming no one again. Thank you. Come on up, Julie. Raising your right hand. Your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will honestly, faithfully, and impartially perform to the best of your ability, the duties for which you have been appointed, excuse me, elected, in accordance with the general laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and the bylaws of the town of Sheffield to help you out?
I will.
Thank you. Sorry. Okay. Greetings.
Thank you.
Will you please join me and stand if you're able for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with justice and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the opportunity to serve as your moderator tonight. I appreciate a good crowd coming out as well. First of all, we'll have our introductions at the head table. We have our town administrator, Rhonda La Bombard, Bob Kilmer, Chair of the Select Board, and Renee Wood also on the Select Board. Unfortunately, Nadine Haver is unable to be with us tonight. I want to thank Felicity Joyce, our town clerk, for doing all the logistics behind the scene, our assistant clerk, Nicole Parker, for running the clicker tonight, and for the support staff checking you in, and should we need any hand counting, they will be with us as well. Before we get started, a couple of housekeeping items. There's seven warrant items tonight. One is financial, six are related to the general bylaws. It's a majority vote required to pass any of these bylaws. So these are not zoning bylaws, these are general bylaws. I just want to make that clarification. If we do have amendments, we will count with our green card. Otherwise, we'll be voting with the clickers. I ask that you stay seated while we're voting. If we have to do any walking around, we'll address that when we get to it. If you wish to speak, please come to the microphone, state your name, your street address, and make your card visible. If it's around your neck, hopefully I can see green to there, and I will know you are a registered voter, otherwise I might ask to see your card. If there is a non-registered voter that wishes to speak, we will take a vote by the resident voters that are here, whether to allow or disallow. Tonight, we're going to be using the clicker system, which I think everybody should be familiar with. It's the Echo 360 clicker system we've used in the past. Just to review, there are two buttons that we use. The 1A is yes, and the 2B is no. You will get about 15 seconds to vote. I got my phone here, trustee, so we will be able to time that. You can change your mind while you're doing the clicker within that 15 seconds. The last click or change that you've made is the one that will be recorded as long as you're within the 15 seconds. Nicole's got us set up. We can do a quick test run. So our test run question. Is everybody ready for the holidays? If you are, you will click 1 for yes, and if you are not, you will click 2. And this is a good practice for me, to figure out the phone setup. It's like, wait a minute. Let me get rid of this. That's in the way. All right. Please vote. Voting is closed. Wow. I am so impressed. I can't believe 40 percent of people are ready for the holidays. Oh, my God, I'm in that no category. Thank you. All right, so we have done our housekeeping. The first order of business before we get to the warrant, I would appreciate, I would entertain a motion to dispense with the town clerk's reading of the warrant. Okay, the motion is made and seconded. We will dispense with the reading of the warrant. We're voting with your green cards. Please raise your hands in affirmative if you wish to have that happen. Okay, take them down. Any opposed? It is approved by a substantial majority. All right, thank you. Now, we will continue on. Article 1. To see if the town will vote to authorize the Select Board to acquire by purchase, gift, or eminent domain and upon such terms and conditions as the Select Board deems appropriate regarding property at 1739 Hewin Street as printed in the warrant.
Ms. Moderator, I move to authorize the Select Board to acquire by purchase, gift, or eminent domain and upon such terms and conditions as the Select Board deems appropriate for general municipal purposes, the fee or lesser interest in all or a portion of the land and improvements thereon located at 1739 Hewin Street, identified as assessor's map, parcel 8, block 4, lot 17, and believed to be described in the deed recorded with the Southern Berkshire District Registry of Deeds in Book 1245, page 329, and to authorize the Select Board to enter into all agreements, execute any and all instruments, and take any and all actions as may be necessary or appropriate to effectuate the foregoing purchase.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is made and seconded on Article 1 as moved. Is there any discussion? David Regis, 45 East Road. I move to amend the article by striking the words "or eminent domain" from the first sentence. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, a motion, an amendment has been made to amend the motion, striking the words "eminent domain." Hold on one second. Is there other discussion?
Ken, I'm sorry, Lou Levine, 261 East Main Street. Can we know why the motion has been made?
The motion or the amended motion?
The amended, why the amendment, why the amendment has been suggested.
I believe that the town should purchase property properly or negotiate for its ownership, and I don't believe the town should simply force the sale to, just to have the property.
Any other comments or discussion, questions?
David Pottle, 29 Laurel Lane, Sheffield. Maybe the town selectmen can just provide a little more information about this particular piece of property, and it's on here on the warrant, in terms of why it's come up and what the intention is with respect to the selectmen as far as this piece of property. Thank you.
Thank you. Selectmen Wood.
Are we talking now about the amendment to the motion or the entire motion?
Dave Pottle, I believe you're talking about the entire motion. You're wondering about the property in general, is that right? Yes.
But I'm just wondering if we have to take a vote on the amendment first, then take a vote on the motion? So if that is...
Okay, well...
Unless we know if the intention is by eminent domain, then we really don't have enough information to vote on the amendment to the motion. So that's why I'd like further clarification. I don't know how everybody else feels about it.
So, the Select Board, we do not have town council with us this evening. The Select Board and the town administrator have no objection to having eminent domain removed.
Okay. We will do that, and then we will get to the further clarification.
I just want to let everyone know that we have a purchase and sale agreement that is contingent upon your approval to purchase the land. There was no intention of using eminent domain. The language is prepared by town council, and he just does it vastly to make sure that all avenues are included. But we do have a signed purchase and sale agreement.
Okay, then, so we'll vote on the amendment, and that will be with your voting card? So the amendment has been made to strike the acquire by eminent domain from the original motion. Is there any other discussion on the amendment? Okay. All those in favor of the amendment, please raise your green voting card. Thank you. Cards down. Anyone opposed? It is a vote in the affirmative. So we will strike eminent domain from that motion. Now, is there discussion on the main motion? And perhaps at this time, our town administrator or Select Board representative could talk about the property.
Do you want to go ahead? So this is a piece of property I think that everyone can probably identify with that has an old house on it that will be torn down. We've had a number of complaints on the property, wondering if something was ever going to be done with it. The property does have asbestos that will have to be removed and carted off-site and disposed of properly. It's a four-acre piece, and the board decided that this would be the ideal piece because of its size, because of the topography of the land, excuse me, there would be less site work needed. It also abuts the business park, and it's not in a heavily residential section of town. The other advantage is when there is plowing in the winter, when the highway goes out to go to work, the majority of them can drop their plow and just begin working. It's not like they're going to have to drive anywhere to find a town road to do their plowing.
Are there any other questions? Please come to the microphone.
Hi, Maria Nation, 334 Westall Road. I want to thank the Select Board. I'm sure they've done a lot of research on this property. That little asbestos building is an eyesore and probably dangerous. I'm just concerned that even though there is an expediency to it and has some advantages that you've all researched, that is the first piece of property that comes into our town of Sheffield. And to have a kind of a, maybe not historic, not, perhaps not attractive, building be the first thing people see coming up into Sheffield, I have a question about that. I have a question also about, has the structure, what we are going to all see as we come into our town, has it been displayed, or do we know anything about it? Can we, we here and everybody that isn't here, have an idea of what it looks like? Or, and why would you do a purchase and sales before the town even gets to vote on? Does this a good idea, a bad idea? How's it going to look? I just feel like this is kind of rushed through. I don't know, maybe I'm late to the party. Everybody else knows what it's going to look like. But I just have a lot of questions and would think that maybe it's prudent to just delay this a little bit until we all get a sense of what it's going to look like in our town. It is going to be, hello, welcome to Sheffield, here's this, you know, maintenance garage. So that's my thought, and maybe I'm late to the party, but thank you.
Selectmen Wood.
Thank you, Maria. One of the things that the Select Board, you can talk to certain people, maybe David Macy, would be, one, there's been a joke around town that the highway garage has been needed for 40 years, and we're still here. This Select Board, Nadine is not with us this evening, but this Select Board has looked at six sites over the last three years, every one of which has been carefully investigated. The last site we looked at is the land across from the school district, and that is in AC/EC. And you can't design a building until you have the land. When we got in, we have gone through and engaged a designer. It turned out that it was going to be about a half a million dollars per acre to do the site prep on that, and that said to us, $2 million in site prep work is not acceptable to this town. That caused us to find another spot. In fact, it was our highway superintendent who found this spot for us, which was very close to the first site that Nadine had asked Smitty to find for us from Mass DOT. You can't design the building, as I said, without the site, so the site has to come first. We, on the Select Board, and you as the voters, will have an opportunity to vote on the steps going forward, including having an opportunity to give comment on the design when it is finished. We have no more interest than anyone in having a building that is not attractive, but it has to be affordable and be an eyesore. That's not what this board or this town is about. So will it meet your or anyone in this room's absolute goal of being the perfect building? I don't know. But together as a town, if this site is approved, otherwise we will keep looking for another site and delay the design and increase the cost every year we wait, I am sure that we will come up with an extremely acceptable, attractive highway garage that is going to be built to last for at least 50 years. And that's all I can say on that. Let me ask my colleague or Rhonda if they wish to add more.
So basically, I can guarantee that it will look better than a house that's falling in a foundation, for one. It will look probably similar to the Sheffield Business Park buildings that are already there on the backside. There are a row of trees that we could use and add to to make a blind from Route 7, so it's not directly seen. This site is flat, level, has no environmental hazards or concerns, so it just seems to fit our needs as best as any piece of property we could find, when we have looked at many. So the design will have to be approved by the voters before it goes up. So you'll get your chance to, you know, question and look and see if you think it's appropriate for the area.
Thank you.
Mark Robitaille, 84 Park Lane. Everything you said is perfect. I know it's been in the works for a long time. I know if people here don't know me, I work for the Great Barrington Fire District and Water Department. And I know one of the big concerns is there's a source of water is on that street, and the hazards and stuff that goes with the town garage being there is one of the reasons why they want to move it out too, but that hasn't been said, just so you know that part. Thank you.
Okay. The microphone was on. Mark, people had difficulty...
People are loud.
Yeah, but then, then the CTSB people can't hear you. I need you to go back. Pretend you're the rock star, get super close, they will hear you, I promise.
Okay. I work for the Great Barrington Fire District, Water Department of Great Barrington. Okay?
Talk into the mic.
Pike Road is one of our sources of water in Sheffield. Okay, there's hazards from the town garage, and I'll bring up, recently, there was gas spilled on the road, which was very next to the well, okay? So it would be our best bet to get rid of it and move it to where they want to move it to, and they've been in the process of trying to do it for many years. It's not like we just, hey, here we go, it's a nice piece of property, it needs to move.
Thank you.
Hi, can you hear?
Yes.
Kate Magram. I live on the corner of Westall Road and Route 7, where my family has lived for over 40 years.
You need to be closer to the microphone, and Kate, oh, there, I was looking for your green card. I just saw it. Never mind, we're good. I got it.
Okay. Kate Magram, I live at 20 Westall Road, where my family has lived for over 40 years. This is not a firm opinion on what you all should do, but I do have some concerns about the location, because that corner, there have been some absolutely horrific accidents on that corner, and I do have a concern that with increased, you know, traffic, especially with trucks, that it raises the risk. And I don't know what sort of investigation, if any, has been done into the cause of the accidents, but there have been some really, really bad ones. So that's my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Renee.
It's important to remember that we only plow town roads. We do not plow 7, 7A, if I remember correctly, or 41. Those are state roads, and those are plowed by Mass DOT.
Okay. Any other comments? Maria, is this new information, or...
Yes.
If it's new, okay?
It's a question about the gas that was spilled, and also to follow up on Kate's. A few years ago, we had a big discussion about the gravel pit down on Eastall Road, and a big concern about the trucks that were going to be going out from there onto 7, and the, and the traffic and the accidents that have been on that odd stretch of road, serious horrible accidents, that were, we were worried about with the gravel pit and the spill of the oil, and to hear that there was a spill of the oil before, I'm just wondering if we are not loading up that one intersection with too many big trucks that are going to be coming and going. That's my question there. Thanks, Kate.
Any other comments?
Sarri Hoy, 60 Main Street, Sheffield.
You need to speak up, I'm sorry. Tip the microphone down a little.
Oh, you can just hear me breathing, probably. Sarri Hoy, 60 Main Street, Sheffield. I just want to say that in regards to knowing what the building looks like first, it being, I think, being a town garage, garage, sorry, we have more say in that than if somebody private bought the land and built whatever they wanted to on it. So I think we have more say here than we do in other situations. And who knows, if we do put the garage there, maybe we can actually encourage the state to put a stoplight or something that slows traffic down. Oh, maybe a roundabout, I don't know.
Thank you. Any other discussion or comments? Seeing no more discussion, then we will vote on Article 1, and we know the amendment to strike eminent domain has been approved. So if you are in favor of Article 1 of the purchase of 1739 Hewin Street, please use your clicker. Are we ready? Okay. Voting now, please. Article 1 has passed by a substantial majority. Thank you very much. Article 2. One piece of additional housekeeping that I forgot to say at the beginning, I didn't want to cut it off in the middle of Article 1. If there is, if people wish to address the microphone more than one time, I'm going to ask that it be for new information, and I will be timing, your time at the mic will be limited to three minutes. So I meant to say that at the beginning, and I forgot, sorry. All right, Article 2. To see if the town will vote to delete Chapter 215 flood hazard zone from the general bylaws or take any other action relative thereto.
Ms. Moderator, excuse me. Ms. Moderator, I move to delete Chapter 215 flood hazard zone from the general bylaws.
Motion has been made and seconded to delete Chapter 215 flood hazard zone from the general bylaws. Is there any discussion? Would anyone at the head table like to make a note of why we're doing that?
Yes.
I believe it was about a year ago that this, at a town, special town meeting, you all voted to recodify the general bylaws. At that time, they hadn't been done since 2001. The only changes that were made were recommended by our legal counsel to bring the bylaws up to compliance with Mass general law. At that time, it was noticed that the flood zone hazard belongs in zoning, not the general bylaws. So it was deleted, it was placed in the zoning. It had been some time ago. And this is really just a cleanup article after the AG passed those and accepted those general bylaws, is to not have it in two places.
Thank you.
So it doesn't belong here, it belongs and is in the zoning bylaws.
Thank you.
Patrick McBride, 1373 Boardman Street. So just to be clear, the existing rules regarding building and what have you will stay in effect? They're just in a different portion of our town zoning laws?
They're more complete, and they are in the zoning bylaws. This article does not affect zoning bylaws at all. It just is a housekeeping to get them out of where they don't belong, which is the general bylaws.
Okay, great, thanks.
Any other questions, comments, discussion? Seeing none, we will prepare to vote, and the voting is open. Voting is closed, and the motion is approved by substantial majority. Article 3. To see if the town will vote to delete Chapter 126 hunting from the general bylaws or take any other action thereto.
Ms. Moderator, I move to amend the general bylaws, Chapter 126 hunting, to now read as follows. No person shall hunt on any town-owned or private property in the town of Sheffield on which the owner has conspicuously posted notices with their name and a prohibition on hunting on such land without written permission of the owner of the land upon which hunting will take place. The written permission must be carried while hunting and be renewed on an annual basis.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded on Article 3. Discussion.
Martin Mitsoff, 960 South Undermountain Road. Renee, did you just read what is going to become, if we vote on it, the amended language that requires written permission from private landowners for hunters to hunt on their property?
Yes and no. Yes, that's what it would say, but to be in compliance with the overarching Mass general law.
Chapter 131.
Chapter 131, an owner must conspicuously post no hunting signs for their property. Now, we don't have that language in our current general bylaw. So this language, to be honest, general counsel, and we all missed this when we recodified our bylaws, and I know you helped with that effort greatly, Martin, but this would make our hunting bylaw consistent and in line with the overarching Mass... with the overarching Mass General, Chapter 131, which controls hunting, trapping, and fishing on private and public properties.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, David Regis Terry at 45 East Road. The article on the warrant specifies that it's to delete Chapter 126, not to amend or make a new chapter.
But, but take just a moment, David. So, take a note where it says, "or take any other action relative thereto." That is why the motion can be an amendment. So, the warrant stated deletion, or it allowed changes. Selectman Wood just made a change, made an amendment to the original motion.
Frequently, when a motion, when a town warrant is put out, especially on a special town meeting, it has to put out, be put out so far in advance that we have not had an opportunity to finalize with legal counsel's permission. So, we wanted to alert people to what was coming up. But that little phrase that's on every warrant article does give us the right to bring forward language under that clause. And that's what we have done.
Pat Levine, 261 East Main Street. What happens if we vote this down? We'll be out of sync with the state, but what does that mean? Can somebody explain that?
It means if you vote it down, that the bylaw stays in our bylaw the way it's written, but it is unenforceable.
Marie Messini Reynolds, 115 Pike Road West. Renee, if you could, I'm sorry, but if you could repeat what the amendment will be. I want to know that no one can come on my property without written permission. So, if you could, when you read it, I wasn't 100% paying attention, I apologize.
So, this is exactly what it would say, this is the amendment. No person shall hunt on any town-owned or private property in the town of Sheffield on which the owner has conspicuously posted notices with their name and a prohibition on hunting on such land without written permission of the owner of the land upon which hunting will take place. The written permission must be carried while hunting and be renewed on an annual basis.
Okay, so the only real, the change is that now it says that it's posted.
Correct.
That's correct?
Correct.
Is there any other, anything else being deleted from what we currently have? Or is that the only thing that's being added to it? So, in other words, the current?
The current bylaw will go away, and what I just read would take its place.
Okay, thank you.
Sarah?
Sarah Sickett, 254 Salisbury Road. I pulled up the general law. It has 118 parts, plus the As and Bs is roughly 150, if anyone's looking to read it. It's a lot. It's not, it's not an easy read, shall we say, as I'm looking at it here. So, I just want to clarify that the ownness for this has now become on the property owners. You, we now have to post in what would be considered conspicuous for our own land to prevent people from entering. If we did not have signs posted in whatever follows conspicuous, and this is following the state law, then people can enter and hunt on our land. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes. It's a bit complicated, because they're not clear as what conspicuous is. And when this came back to us-
And that was my next question.
My opinion was, we should follow Mass General law and clean it up. As I've researched, they do not enforce no trespassing, whether it's posted or not. Because if it's not posted so closely that you can't enter a piece of property without seeing a sign, it's not good enough. And so, from what I read of Kate's law, and I didn't read a lot of them, but from what I've seen, it's pretty much unenforceable, it has almost never been enforced.
Explain what's never been enforced.
The no trespassing. So, basically, if somebody does trespass, and you call the police, they come, and they give them a citation, almost never does it go to court.
So, I'm going to be honest. My kid's riding their pony in the woods, and someone enters the land and did not see a no trespassing sign, and now there's absolutely nothing we can do about it. So, my next question is-
Well, you can call the police officers.
And I'm not opposed to hunting, but post gunshot is a little late on a brown pony. So, my, my next statement is, is there something else the town can do in addition to this? If our previous one was unenforceable, are we able to augment or add to this in a way that the ownness is not on the taxpayer nailing a tree every two feet?
Okay. So, from what I researched, we're one of about 40 towns that have this bylaw. We are not alone, and obviously, they're not in compliance either. Even though it must have passed the Attorney General at some point, it does not now. Basically, from what I can see, it's not going to make much difference whether we keep our bylaw as is, unenforceable, or we add the amendment, so we match Mass General law 131, because they don't enforce it. And it's too vague to enforce it. So, basically, the only good thing I found in my research is, most of the time, the property owner is not liable if somebody comes onto your property and gets hurt.
I'm not worried about them getting hurt?
I, I understand that. And I, I do feel your, your apprehension about this, and I agree. I think our bylaw is much better than Mass General, Chapter 131, but that's not legal.
So, I have a direct opposing opinion to my colleague. It is our job as your select board and your town administrator to make sure that our laws are in compliance with state law. It is not that our bylaws trump state law. State law trumps our bylaws. It is only when our bylaws, in certain cases, are more rigorous than state law that they stand. So, right now, we have brought this forward to you as voters, and this is why we struggled and didn't have the wording when the warrant was posted, is because this is, do you want to be legal, or do you want to be illegal? Now, I have a statement from my colleague, Nadine, that I would like to read. And this is on this issue. It is my opinion that the town should follow the recommendations of the Attorney General as it relates to Sheffield rules for permission to hunt. My understanding of the AG's recommendation is that if we do not follow the state guidelines, and a landowner has an issue with unwanted hunting on their property without being, the property being properly posted, it is unlikely that the landowner will purvey an illegal suit. I understand that people do not want to post their property, and that is fine. The choice not to post, knowing that by not posting, you may be in legal peril or illegal action. But basically, that's your own right. So, Chapter 131 basically says, no person shall, a person, excuse me, shall not fish, hunt, or trap on private land without permission of the owner or tenant thereof. After such owner or tenant has conspicuously posted thereon notices which bear the name of such owner or tenant and which state that fishing, hunting, or trapping on such land, as the case may be, is prohibited. My goal is to make sure that we can keep up the no hunting without permission signs that are on every major road coming into Sheffield. I truly do not know how many people read the bylaws. But I want to make sure, as your selectman, that this town is protected, and you do what you want with your private property. But that you know what the state law says, and you know what puts you in the best legal position. I would also like to be able to have the town properties properly posted so that we don't have people coming in hunting in town park without permission. So, that's kind of where I'm coming from, I think where Nadine is coming from. We cannot, as Bob said, guarantee enforcement. But I do know, if you take a case somewhere and you don't have your property posted, and it is required in Mass General law, your chances are probably less that you will prevail. I did not go looking to see what conspicuously posted said. They did not define it. So, I'm going to, when I post my land, I will decide how I think it's conspicuously posted.
So, I'm going to charge the select board with a question about keeping my own children safe on my own property. I don't care afterwards if it's not enforceable, because the incident I'm worried about, it would be too late.
Well, the law also says that you're not supposed to hunt within 500 feet of a home. And there's a lot of other things that's in chapter. But I can't answer that question, except never wear white during hunting season when you're in their backyard.
If I'd known, I should have bought a white pony, it's a little late.
So.
It needs an orange blanket, Sarah. Sorry, I live in the woods too. My horses had orange on when it was that season. I will, I will, my interjection. David?
I move to amend the article to change the word conspicuously to every 50 feet.
That would violate the state law? Because the state law says conspicuously posted. And I think you are making it in a way that we don't know if that would stand up. And they're leaving it to everyone's opinion, so why not just go with this? I would hope that no one would second that motion.
Is there a second? There is a second to that motion. All right, we have an amendment on the floor to adjust that motion to say conspicuously post every 50 feet. David, this is retro for the last amendment, and this one, I need these amendments in writing for our town clerk. I'm keeping track now, but I do need something from you before you leave tonight.
All right.
Pat, are you commenting on this issue, the amendment?
Not on the amendment.
I'm sorry?
I'm not commenting on the amendment.
Not the amendment, okay. Any other comments on the amendment? Please come to the microphone. Martin?
Yep, I just wanted to let everybody-
Please identify yourself, Martin.
Martin Mitsoff, 960 South Undermountain Road. I spoke a little while ago. I'm coming with new information. The Massachusetts website has a telephone number for the Mass Environmental Police. It's 1-800-632-8075. I will tell you from personal experience, if you call that number and there's a hunter on your property and they're violating your intent and your will, the Mass Police will come out. These are serious individuals, they're heavily armed. You don't mess with these folks. I love our police department, but Mass Environmental Police are serious, and they're serious about their jobs, which is protecting the environment and protecting your property. And the second thing is, thank you very much for clarifying all of that, select board and Renee.
Thank you. On the amendment?
Yes, on the amendment, James Kelly, County Road. Every 50 feet? No. In my case, there's a lot of 50 footers I have to be putting up. If I am posting such that is conspicuous, there are spots where I post closer. There are spots where I post farther apart in the middle of the swamp. The fact that it, it won't be enforced, I have called the police, and it's been resolved. And I can say that I believe you can also do civil, and that was how my older brother got pulled into court.
Okay, other comments on the amendment?
Sarri Hoi, 60 Main Street. I agree with Jim. I work in the woods all the time. I flag boundaries for my employees. Sometimes 50 feet is conspicuous, and sometimes it is not enough. I don't think that's a good amendment.
Anything else on the amendment? All right, let's vote on the amendment. We'll be using our green, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I didn't see you back there. Thank you.
Hi, Nancy Schmalsky, 45 Wood Edge Lane. I don't believe anyone should be burdened with putting up no trespassing signs, especially if they have a large stretch of property, because it's a lot to do. And no one should be able to hunt without written permission, period. That's, that is what I think. And I say that because I was shot on my own land a year ago. Not by a hunter, but people with guns can be very reckless. Thank you.
Other comments on the amendment? All right, so we are voting on the amendment, which would add to the motion made for Article 3, conspicuously posted at 50 feet, or every 50 feet. So, if you are in favor of the amendment, please raise your green card. This is not a clicker vote. If you, thank you. If you are opposed, please raise your green card. That is a substantial majority. This motion has failed. The amendment has failed. Pat, now you have a comment on the main motion.
Yes, Pat Levine, 261 East Baines Street. Something that I think that you said, Renee, prompted me to wonder if there was another more massive and inclusive way of posting. Right now, we have signs as you enter Sheffield's that say, "This is a right-to-farm community." Can we also have signs that say, "No, no hunting on public or private land unless blah, blah, blah," and put it on all the main entry roads to the town?
We have metal signs that, is this what you're talking about, that greet us on every road, major road that you come into? Right, right north of the GMC dealer, coming in from the south, that say, has a town seal. It's a green and white sign, it's posted on a metal post. It's conspicuous, it says, "No hunting allowed in Sheffield without the permission of the owner." This is, again, I want those signs, and I'm sure Bob does too, and Nadine, want those signs to stay up. The only issue is, from your point of view and our point of view, our current bylaw does not sync with state law. And the conspicuously posted stuff is where it's out of line. So, this article seeks to bring our current hunting law up to spec with the state law. And the state law trumps any local general bylaw that's not in compliance.
Since conspicuous is not defined, I was going on the angle that this, by this community, if it voted a bylaw, would, would be its definition of conspicuous, and not have to have 500,000 signs all over the woods.
I believe, Pat, that it would have to be individual posting by the owner of the property. And where we have the signs, we, we're not even the owner of the property. The state is, because they're posted on the right-of-way of the state highways that come into town.
Pat, the signs that we have posted are like the right-to-farm community signs, and are like the Tree City USA. They're informational signs. They don't, from what I've understood, years ago, there used to be people that would swarm in from Boston and other places, and just go hunting willy-nilly without anything. So, there's been a long haul to get the permission that's required. The state law changed somewhere since that general bylaw was adopted years ago. So, those signs are just informational. This is down to your personal property. And again, you can't hunt 500 feet from a house. So, if your house has no land behind it that's yours, that's- it that's yours that's more than 500 feet, you wouldn't have to post anyway, unless somehow you felt you wanted to.
Maria Nation, 334 Westell Road. Just a clarification, so our current state, our current town bylaw, unenforceable. The state bylaw, unenforceable, more or less. Just a question, because that's a little alarming for a lot of people in here, especially anybody that has land and ponies and horses and dogs, which some of us do. How many complaints have there been in the last five, 10 years about illegal hunters on private property?
No complaints to the town hall, however, I don't have any idea if the police department, how many they've received. But that's certainly information that we could find out. If anybody would like to give a call tomorrow or the next day, the town hall will have that answer for you.
And I think Martin Mitsoff did provide a number. Whether that's enforceable or not, I've always had permission slips, so, for the hunters that hunt on my property. So I've never had a problem. The problem I have had is with trespassers, and I've called the chief, and he's eventually found them and talked with them. It's been more people trespassing than hunting.
Any other comments, questions on Article 3? Okay, we will prepare to vote. A yes vote will amend, as has been read twice. A no vote will keep the bylaw as is, unenforceable. All right, so let's open the voting. Voting is closed. The amendment has passed with substantial majority. Article 4, to see if the town will vote to delete Chapter 89, "Community Residence" from the general bylaw or take any other action relative thereto.
Ms. Moderator, I move to delete Chapter 89, "Community Residence," from the general bylaws.
Motion has been made and seconded, that we delete Chapter 89, "Community Residences" from the general bylaws. Any discussion? I think if, as you've heard tonight, this is cleanup of general bylaws and codification. Any questions on this article?
My question is, follows on the other bylaw that we, what was it, Article 2. Do we have a community residence bylaw someplace else in our bylaws?
Community resident bylaw belongs in the zoning bylaws. The planning board has been working on a specific bylaw for that, but it is covered in the meantime by the zoning, the state zoning bylaw, Chapter 40A. So it is implicitly already in the zoning bylaws. It does not belong in the general bylaws. This is housekeeping again.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, we will prepare to vote. Let's have the voting open, please. And voting is closed. Again, this motion has passed by substantial majority. Article 5. I'm going to ask you to please listen carefully, and we will try to review this as needed. Listen carefully to the motion regarding the artificial light pollution that will be made. It's going to vary slightly from what is written in the warrant article due to last-minute changes by town council. So thus, I'm not going to read that particular motion as is. In particular, you'll want to take note, Chapter 72 is referenced in the warrant. It should read Chapter 73. Typographical error, I'm quite sure. The motion also lays out a timeline for enforcement and fines.
So as I read this motion, you have almost the full warrant in front of you, and I'll make mention when I come to the, to the change advised by town council. Ms. Moderator, I move to amend the general bylaws by adding Chapter 73, "Artificial Light Pollution," as written in the warrant, and amending Section 73.5. So that's one of the sections, 73.5, number three. To read. Section 143 of these bylaws for, excuse me, see Section 143 of these bylaws for fines. First violation shall be applicable if the Select Board ordered a remedy, and timeframe if it is not enacted within 60 days of their decision. Second violation after 90 days, and third and subsequent violations thereafter.
Motion has been made and seconded, as presented by Select, Select Board Member Wood, to amend the general bylaw. Are there questions regarding the artificial light pollution? Ah, Bonda. Town Administrator, please.
I just want to make sure that everyone understands that the only change from what's written in the warrant is under 72-5, number three. And all that does is give a timeline for the violations. So the first violation, if it's not rectified within 60 days, and then 90 days, and then hereon after that. That's the only change that's being proposed at this time.
Yes, Renee?
Ms. Moderator, I would like to make an amendment to this article. And the reason for this is, several people called me over the weekend to note a few things that we had left out. So I would like to make a motion to amend Article 5, to add a new Section 73-3 exemptions, which shall read, number one, "All temporary emergency lighting needed by police, fire department, EMS, ambulance, or other emergency services, as well as all vehicular lights, are exempt." Number two, "All hazard warning luminaries required by federal regulatory agencies are exempt." Number three, "Holiday and string lighting provided its hours of operation or volume of lighting do not impact the use and enjoyment of individual property through artificial light pollution." The second part of this motion is to renumber the rest of the sections.
Okay, so we have, the amendment has been seconded.
Regarding holiday lighting, I don't, the provision that specifies that it should not impact the use or enjoyment of another is at best vague, and almost any lighting could be said to affect the use and enjoyment of another. As some of you may or may not know, I have a brilliant lighting display that many people enjoy in my house. It, the light easily leaves my property, since my house is near the road, and it could be easily argued by the person across the street or next to me, that it's impacting the use and enjoyment. Now, many people enjoy it, and it's a temporary thing. If we're going to restrict it, it should be by hours of operation, and not by the subjective opinion of a random person that may or may not like it. So I move to strike the, of use and enjoy, after the use and enjoyment part, from the amended motion in, in the appropriate place.
Well, there's one amendment on the floor. We have a second amendment here. It has, which has not been seconded. Take the first amendment first. All right, can, so, here's where I'd be asking town council, who's not here. Can we listen to other amendments and then go back and vote on the first one? Or do we vote as each one comes up?
It would be easier to keep track to vote as they're presented.
Okay, all right, that is, that's what I was thinking. So that's what we will do. David, hold your thought on that, your second amendment. Is there any other comments on the amendment that Select Board Member Wood read in terms of exemptions?
Can you just read the third one again, please?
I'm sorry, I didn't...
The holiday lights. Can you read that one again?
The third one?
So the third one, "Holiday and string lighting provided its hours of operation or volume of lighting do not impact the use and enjoyment of individual property through artificial light pollution."
Okay, we've had clarification there. Any other comments on the amendment that, as presented? Is this new information, David?
I just want a clarification, that we're voting on the amendment that I made to the amendment.
No, we're voting on the initial amendment that Renee Wood made.
Thank you.
Just clarification on the third one?
Identify yourself. I know it's tedious, please, but...
Sorry, Maria, 334 Westell Road. The objection to the property, is it the abutting property, or somebody driving by could object? Who could, who's allowed to object to Christmas lights they don't like?
So if you've had a chance to look at the warrant, basically, you'll see that there is a section that deals with filing a complaint and a decision process. So there, we don't have anything that deals with anything like this in the bylaws right now, okay? So if you have a neighbor's light shining in your light, in your house, and it keeps you up all night, or, or motion detectors that go off at random all night, keeps you and disturbs you from your sleep, you're stuck with it. So this warrant article puts up how to file a complaint, and that the Select Board will make a decision. So I doubt, though I could not say, but I would doubt that the Select Board would entertain a complaint by you driving by. That's not the enjoyment of, no, I don't mean to be, you know, Maria asked a good question, and it deserves a good, I hope, answer. So it's your, it's your individual property. You're sleep disturbed, you have a, you know, some sort of medical problem where this, whatever it is, is bothering you. And that's why I wanted to exempt all of the police lights, your car lights. So this isn't a casual situation, you know? This is proximity property rights of one versus another.
George Rowland, Foley Road. I believe the First Amendment was changing the time schedule on the fine, on the fines. The Second Amendment was on the lights.
No, the First, the First Amendment, well, I mean, Renee, you have that. Go ahead.
The First Amendment that was made was in the original motion. As Julie pointed out before, on your warrant, it says, "Or take any other action thereto." And Renee made the original motion to include the amendment for the fines.
David Rogers, 45 East Road, just an additional question. After we vote on Ms. Woods' amendment, we will vote separately on the main motion and be able to comment on it at that point, yes?
Yes.
Good, thank you.
Okay. All right, we have someone else coming to the mic.
Brittany Ebling, 87, Maple Ave. If I understood correctly, the exception proposed would be an exception that applies to holiday lighting. And on the planning board, we've seen some discussion of disputes between neighbors that concern lighting that is temporary holiday lighting. So I would like to see this apply to holiday lighting, even if temporary. So I would not support that exception, though I would support the other exceptions that were named.
So I want to clarify, Renee, that the number three, the exemption, it, what's that? It is an all or nothing. All right. To the amendment, okay, very good. All right. Oh, okay, that, okay. Any other comments on the amendment that has been made by Select Board Member Wood? We're still there.
Neil Chamberlain, 115 Railroad Street in the metropolitan area of Ashley Falls. I can't fully understand what this holiday light amendment says. Could you clarify what we're talking about here?
So what Renee has put in as an amendment to holiday lighting would exempt any holiday lights that anybody would like to put up, as long as they're not interfering with your neighbor's right to their property as well. So that you can put up Christmas lights, you can put up Valentine lights, you can put up Easter lights, Halloween. You have the right to do that, or string lights on your patio. Where the complaint would come in is if a neighbor had a problem because some of your lights were disrupting their life somehow, then they could bring a complaint to the Board of Selectmen. Does that answer?
Okay, another comment on the amendment?
Yes.
Identify yourself, my friend Bonnie?
Bonnie Silver, 15 Bow Road. I question why you just say holiday lights, because somebody could put up three months of their child getting a medical degree. So why not have it as temporary lighting to follow those directions? That's part one of my question. Part two is, why not specify both the times allowed and the span of time for temporary lighting? Because somebody could say one week, and somebody could say, "Lights must be off by 11," and someone else is gonna say nine. So is there a reason that you have not specified, all right, that, those things? So those are my two questions.
So first of all, it says holiday and string lighting. Some people don't think of string lighting as holiday lights. Holiday lights can go much beyond string lighting.
But that doesn't answer somebody...
So that's number one. Number two is, believe it or not, we're really not trying to over-regulate. We're hoping that if there is an issue, that the neighbors will work it out by themselves. And for someone, you know, who know, we don't, we don't think we should say to the town, "You can only do lights between this time and this time." We were advised by town council, once you say temporary, then you have to figure out how temporary. Then you've got to say, "Is it three weeks in a row, and that doesn't coincide with somebody's holiday?" Then you've got to say, "Is it 12 days out of the year?" Then you've got to say, "Is it 12 days out of the year?" We don't want to get into all of that. We have heard complaints about string lights and holiday lights. So again, we're trying to put this into an artificial light pollution issue, which deals with all kinds of lights. And we were trying to find that fine balance that does not step on personal property rights, but also gives voice to all parties in a neighborhood.
Just to go back for a minute, mine was not only holiday, why are you not including any temporary lighting period? As I said, the example of someone celebrating their kid's getting a medical degree.
Originally, temporary lighting was included, and it was felt that it would not pass this meeting.
Okay. And that answers that part. And just as a comment, I don't think the fact that the Select Board stood back from a timeframe and an hour frame is going to make it any easier for any of our citizens who are having difficulty with lighting. I appreciate, you know, "Don't interfere," but I also know for some people, anything that would alleviate confrontation by making it easier to say, you know, "Any lighting has to be off by midnight," or "Temporary means no more than 60 days," would probably make it easier for people in our town. That's all.
Okay. Thank you, Bonnie.
I would hope that the town will vote for this. I'm not sure at this moment that I'm hearing that support, and that we would live with it for a while, and then if we need to make changes, make changes. It's very hard to get something like this that's so encompassing right the first time.
Thank you. Another spokesperson.
Patrick McBride, 1373 Boardman. I might make a suggestion that we look into the town noise ordinances for temporary parties or events or what have you. I'm pretty sure we do have a timeframe on when music or a band is supposed to stop. And, you know, from what I gather, people have been having parties and events and weddings and such for, you know, 100 years plus in Sheffield, and that could help us.
Patrick, your point's well taken, but it's kind of off -- the noise is off topic of light, but thank you for sharing.
No, I understand that. It's not about noise. It's actually if we can potentially follow that same guideline, because noise could, you know, I think it's 10 o'clock or something like that. I do feel that we should have some sort of timeframe so that the town can think about that, because what happens is that we're actually kind of ignoring the elephant in the room, which is there are people that really embrace holiday lighting, and their neighbors directly oppose it for one reason or another. And so nothing's going to be, to David's point, it's just like someone's opinion about it disrupting their lives. So if there is a timeframe, then I think that is helpful.
Okay. Thank you. Other comments on this amendment?
Hi there. Hannah Sherman, 152 Berkshire School Road. I just want to clarify that I'm understanding kind of the intention of this amendment, which it seems to me that it's simply to make it possible, to give an avenue for someone to be able to complain about lighting that their neighbors are doing that they don't like, and to say, "These are the situations in which we would consider entertaining that complaint versus these are the situations in which we would not consider entertaining that complaint, but those complaints will be dealt with on a case-by-case basis if this passes. But right now, if it doesn't pass, there is no avenue to make such a complaint." Am I understanding that correctly?
You are.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Are we voting on the amendment?
We're voting on the -- we are -- we will be voting on the amendment that Renee Wood presented to us, that added the section with the exemptions.
I have other comments for...
And then one, if we, depending on -- once we vote on that, then we'll go back to the original motion. Okay? No other discussion is seen. So those in favor of the amendment, again, amendment, we're using our cards. So if you are in favor of the amendment, please show your voting card.
First card.
Cards down. Any opposed? All right. That passed by a substantial majority. So now we're going to go back to the original motion on the floor. Do we want to read that again? Do we need to do -- do we need to read that again? I don't know. Well, we're open -- let's just say we're opening back to the original discussion. David, so now you are proposing something else, I think.
Well, I move to amend the amended motion to strike the provision, limiting it by someone's use or enjoyment, simply, that is to say, simply making it an exemption for temporary lighting for holidays and whatnot.
Okay.
I'm sorry if that's unclear.
It is. I'm like, which wording did you want to...
Sorry. So let me give exact wording.
Number three. Okay.
On point three, which is currently stated as exempt the holiday and string lighting except as it affects the use and enjoyment of another's property. That's the provision. And to strike the end use of others and the use of enjoyment of others' property.
I need this in writing. I was going to say, this is the Second Amendment. Both of those amendments, I need that now.
If I could have -- well, I can't give it to you now unless I have the language, and I can strike it on the language.
So we have sorted out this amendment to the amendment. So on number three regarding holiday, the original amendment that just passed, "Holiday and string lighting, provided its hours of operation or volume of lighting, do not impact use and enjoyment of individual property through artificial light pollution." What we will strike is a good chunk. All it will say is that an exemption is holiday and string lighting. No disclaimer. That is what David is trying to say in his amendment. And so I am wondering if there is a second amendment, a second to that amendment, sorry.
Second.
All right. So a motion has been made and seconded that we will amend the amendment, strike all the language after the listing of holiday and string lighting as an exemption.
Julie Osborne, 74 East Road. I lived diagonally across from David. The issue of -- there's so many issues here. The enjoyment of his holiday lights, his family enjoys. I completely get that. But from our perspective, that light invades into our windows. We've had to put double blackout curtains in our bedroom, and they still creep through the cracks and wake us up. The dining room is filled with the lights and hurt our eyes if we happen to look outside. Our house is the least impacted on the block. Our neighbors here live directly across the street from the house, and it's like an invasion is hitting, you know, our windows. And they not only cannot say that it's temporary, because they put their lights up a week before Thanksgiving and don't take them down until the middle of March. They also do Halloween lighting, they do Fourth of July lighting, they do track lighting across the ridges of their houses. So anybody who has any kind of problems with strobe lighting is going to have a problem with that. So when you think about the impact that holiday lighting might have on others, think about the Las Vegas Strip on our block. Come take a look. Come take a look. Come to East Road. Come to Boardman Road. You'll see the front of the house on East Road and the back of the house on Boardman Road, and you'll see the impact that we have. Walk on the block. Stand in front of our windows. See what we see. Anybody else want to come over here?
Okay. Thank you. Okay?
Oh, and I just wanted to reiterate what Hannah said. This is only giving us permission to complain to you later. This is not a moratorium on everybody right now that they can't do something. This is not infringing on anybody's property rights at all. Do I get that right?
That's right. There is an enforcement.
Thank you.
David, is this a new comment? New information? If it's not a new -- if we've already heard what you want to share, I'm only looking for new information right now.
Well, I guess it's new information, but it's part also response to the last comment.
No, no. If there's someone new, if there's actually new -- we're not doing a one-to-one debate. So that's why I say if there's something actually new, that's fine, but it's not to respond back and forth and back and forth.
Very well. Then I'll stick to the new bit. This measure would create a cause of action that would permit the town to order anyone who puts up lighting that another does not like to get the town to force you to take it down by potentially extreme fining, at first small, and it gets bigger as time rolls on. There is legal principles, as I understand it, and I'm not a lawyer, to be fair, that provide for civil causes of action if it is negatively impacting the use and enjoyment of property. This provision specifically gives the town the authority to fine you in perpetuity if you do not meet with the town's approved judgment based on the objections of one resident.
Thank you. Is there -- we'll please hold your comments here. Anyone else at the microphone, please? Oh, Renee?
The purpose of this whole bylaw is to allow citizens to come forward and bring a complaint and have it heard by the Select Board in an open public hearing, where everyone will be given their opportunity to speak. It is, as usual, if the Selectmen were to make a decision, we're talking about holiday lighting, so let's go down that path. It may be to lessen the volume of lights. It may be to restrict the hours of usage, so that someone said something about noise 10 o'clock. I don't know exactly what that would be, but we are trying to provide a process that everyone in this town, if they are bothered by strobe lights, you know, motion detector lights that go off in the middle of the night, holiday or string lighting, they would have the opportunity to do that. And I've lived in this town long enough to know that for someone to bring a signed complaint forward in a letter takes a fair amount of courage. Most people don't want to go there. They try and work it out with their neighbors first, and it's only when they can't that they sometimes come forward. So also, I would expect that any decision by your Select Board would be subject to appeal in some court, as almost everything is these days. So I just want to kind of put a little bit of realism into what this bylaw is trying to do.
Thank you. Yes?
Alex Ross, 74 East Road. In response to -- well, just to say, it's not one person affected. It's at least a dozen people who live on that road or nearby who are affected. Those lights are so bright, you can see them for miles away. We cannot sleep at night. I have CPTSD. I was suicidal last Christmas because of their lights, and I can bring you medical evidence for this. So for this gentleman to get up and make these completely mendacious comments is just unacceptable. Our life is hell between Thanksgiving and March. It's just unbelievable. You open our windows, you think you're in Las Vegas. If you like Las Vegas so much, move there, but don't make our lives hell. Thank you. I'm sorry I'm emotional.
Thank you for your thoughts. Yes?
Neil Chamberlain, 115 Railroad Street. Do I understand, Ms. Moderator, that we passed Renee's motion?
That is right.
And that this Second Amendment is to distract what -- take away from what we just passed?
That is right.
That's correct? I move the question. Let's vote on this amendment.
Thank you. Is there a second? All right. Well, then, let's first vote on calling the question. All in favor of calling the question, please raise your card. Anyone opposed to calling the question? All right. Question has been called. We are voting on the amendment, which is the amendment to the amendment under exemptions, where we would delete all of the wording after holiday and string lighting in that new amendment. Any questions? Okay. Let us vote on the -- oh, sorry.
I'm sorry. I just want us to be very clear on what we're voting here. What we -- if we vote to strike that language, then we are giving permission to have holiday and string lighting at any time for as long as you like.
Um, not necessarily.
Well, I'm just trying to clarify this. If we strike that language, then the exemption says that people can have holiday and string lighting.
That's right.
So they can have that for as long as they want?
Right. No qualifications.
No qualifications whatsoever.
That is correct.
Good.
So that's what we're voting on.
So a yes vote means...
A yes vote means you approve no qualifications to holiday...
Good. Thank you.
A no vote means you would accept the original amendment as provided by Selectman Wood. Are we clear? Okay. All in favor, we -- this is an amendment. We're using our green cards again. All in favor of the amendment. Cards may be come down. All opposed to the amendment. All right. The amendment fails by substantial majority. Article six. Oh, God! All right. Can you tell I'm trying to move this meeting along? Okay, let's vote on the original motion. The original motion on the floor. Thank you, folks.
Point of order.
The original motion on the floor.
Point of order. We have not had any discussion on the main motion.
That is right. That is right. So we have the original main motion that we will now discuss.
Okay. Good. So that has been moved and is active for discussion, yes?
Yes.
Good. So I have several questions about this statute, or this bylaw as it is. For example, there is a very limited definition of light pollution. It defines light pollution as the presence of unwanted, inappropriate, or excessive artificial lighting. This term refers to the effects of any poorly implemented lighting during the day or at night. The big question is, who determines -- or the big questions are, who determines what is excessive? What are the criteria for excessiveness? And where and how is it measured? How is a citizen supposed to know if they're in compliance? How is a citizen supposed to know if they're in compliance with the bylaw before they spend money installing lighting? Furthermore, the lighting also, the bylaw also specifies that an electric light unit is to be constructed so that when installed, all outside artificial lighting emitted from the unit shines below the shield. Now, what angle is permissible? Is that 180 degrees of a ground plane? Is it 10 degrees pointed towards the ground? It doesn't say, there's no way to know. To just accept randomly the Select Board's subjective opinion of that without even knowing if it's going to be accepted or problematic before you pay to have it installed, and this can be expensive, is silly, in my opinion. Furthermore, under, there's a provision that specifies that a fully shielded lighting needs to be Dark Sky compliant, fully shielded outdoor lighting fixtures, any outdoor lighting fixture which meets the standards of this organization for fully shielded outdoor lighting fixtures. There isn't an organization by the name of Dark Sky International, but this doesn't actually say what the organization is. So we have no effective means to determine if it's, if we're actually in compliance.
David, you are well past, you are well past three minutes. Thank you. Oh, response from the Select Board.
So what we have tried to accomplish here is to come up with a light pollution ordinance that is not overly restrictive and heavily regulating for the people of Sheffield, but does give them an avenue to bring it to the Select Board, where you have three people that sit on the board, you can present your case, you can have people come and present with you, you can have legal counsel if you'd like. But this will give the town a little bit of regulation without really over-regulating every step and every detail that you're looking for. We are not going to sit here and regulate every possibility and every minute detail down to the last one. This is just to give us a little bit of protection and give people a choice.
If I might just add, this comes out of a zoning bylaw, a Dark Sky zoning bylaw, that our council said belonged in the general bylaws, not zoning. And several members on the Select Board are for less regulation, including myself, than over-regulation. The board, the building inspector will have a set, and we'll make them available on town website, a set of acceptable lighting features that do comply to Dark Sky standards, which means the light is shielded to go downward, not upward, and add to artificial light pollution. So you will have an opportunity to see what those light shields and what those light fixtures look like, work with the building inspector. Most stores these days are carrying almost all Dark Sky compliant light fixtures because there's no reason to shine light up in the air. So it's not quite as, you know, I'm out there on my own. You will have the light fixtures that the zoning board recommended before the planning, excuse me, you will have the fixtures that the planning board was going to recommend before this moved over to the Select Board for work.
Thank you, yes.
Richard McLaughlin, La Jet Road. I make a motion to move the article.
Motion's been made and seconded to call, to move the motion, to call the question. So we are voting on the orig, original motion? Oh yeah, let's, let's take our vote to call the question. All in favor of calling the question? Show your card. Cards down. Any opposed? Approved, it passes by substantial majority. So now we will vote on the article as it was originally presented by Selectmen Wood. So we have all the amendments passed. Is there any other discussion? It's been called, we're done? All right, so now we are going to use our clickers. So we will get ready to use our clickers. Hold on, all right. Voting is closed. And Article Five passes by substantial majority. Thank you very much for all of your time. Okay, Article Six. To see if the town will vote to amend the general bylaws by amending Chapter 63 animals as follows or take any other action relative thereto as written in the warrant.
Ms. Moderator, I move to amend the general bylaws by amending Chapter 63 animals by deleting the current 63.2 in its entirety and inserting the new 63.2 as written in the warrant and the new 63.3 enforcement violations and penalties to read, see Mass. General Law, Chapter 140, Section 173A, as may be amended for violations and penalties.
The motion has been made and seconded in favor of Article Six. Any discussion? Any explanation, anyone from the Select Board wish to make an explanation? Oh, we have a question.
Hi, Nancy Schmolsky, 45 Wood Edge Lane, Sheffield. I want to discuss the feeding of bears and the dangers.
Nancy, that is a different regulation that the Select Board adopted. It's not really pertinent. You need to speak with the Select Board about that directly.
Well, this is to do with the animals, am I right?
I think you're talking about the wildlife feeding
Yes.
Regulation, and that is a new regulation. Is that pertinent to this? I don't think so.
I think I'm misunderstanding what it is you're talking about.
Okay, well then, clarification, please, from our town administrator?
Thank you.
This mainly deals with our animal control officer having the ability to issue enforcements and violations mainly to do with, for instance, dogs and the licensing running at large. Currently, our animal control officer does not have the ability to issue fines and then enforce those fines.
But it's talking about animals here. We are animals too, by the way. You know, bears and other things that people are attracting in harmful ways to the animals and to people.
I think that wildlife regulation really is not necessarily a part of what we're trying to accomplish here.
Correct.
Help me figure that out.
All right, well, I just want to say, I live in a neighborhood where the bears come by every day and
Nancy, I don't think that this is really pertinent to what we're trying to accomplish on this motion.
Well, then this is vaguely written, sorry.
I'm sorry. All right, question? Rhonda?
Just, I know this isn't pertaining to this warrant article, but I just want to let the resident that spoke recently know that the Board of Selectmen recently passed a regulation that deals with wildlife, the feeding of wildlife. It's on our website, I believe it's under News and Announcements, and that should help with the enforcement of anyone who has a situation that she just mentioned.
Yes, absolutely. And it is under news, under the website, because I happen to be looking at that today, and it was one of the first items, I think. All right, yes.
Jim Larkin, 174 West Road. This one really gets under my skin. I can't quite figure out whether it's a cruel joke or a new definition of insanity. We recently had a control officer stop the farm, and, excuse me, apparently went to all the other farms that had farm animals and suggested the son and I, the pasture had to have water tested. So I asked her, well, what are you going to have water tested for? Well, she said that we needed potable water for animals out on pasture, and I just couldn't believe such as the animals on pasture is the, really the gold standard, and they live their life the best they possibly can. Since evolution, we've been part of a system with microbes, and we wouldn't be here if we required potable water, most likely. I mean, you and I are the same as the animals, and the microbes are part of us and part of every animal. That's their development, that's their evolution. And to think that now, all of a sudden, in 2023, they need to have potable water, I mean, I thought she was out of her mind, and she has no comprehension of what her normal farm practice is for animals. So I mean, like I say, it's a new definition of insanity of that person to write to give fines out to farmers.
Oh, yep, Select Board Kilmer, please.
So basically, this really doesn't have anything to do with the situation you're talking about. And she was correct, there are laws in place that state just what she quoted. Whether I agree with them, which I don't, that has nothing to do with what we're voting on here, and that would be something else that we would take to Farm Bureau or Boston because that's where the laws originate. She was only enforcing what she was told and taught, unfortunately. Because she is the animal control officer. She, by our rules, or by the state authority, is supposed to come and check on our animals and take numbers. That is part of her job. She'll, she went to training, they gave her training, that training is spent on the books. You know some of this stuff is nothing new, but it has been loosely enforced because it is so kind of crazy to think it's actually law. But, you know, people in Boston who help make law don't usually have cattle and livestock, so, you know, it will be a longer battle if it's, they start enforcing it, it will be a much longer battle for us to have it changed. But this here doesn't have anything pertinent to that problem.
Okay, David?
David Pottle, 29 Laurel Lane. The issue of enforcement and so on, I know that the animal control officer comes around once a year, and in terms of the horses that I have, you know, fills out a certificate and so on, and I haven't, I have been in compliance, whatever that means, ever since this took, this took place. But there's never a listing of specific things, for example, that the animal control officer is looking for. I mean, you would assume, you know, shelter, for example, having a proper water supply, a proper food supply, that, you know, there's not manure all over the place, et cetera, such and such, but there's no listing. In other words, when you're talking about enforcement and we're talking about penalties, we kind of need to know specifically what we should be looking for, you know? And there really, there isn't a listing of that. I'm sure, you know, people have, we have chickens and so on as well, and there should be a listing for those kinds of things. So it's a matter of enforcing what and penalties for what.
So I just want to point out that Chapter 63 under animals in our general bylaws deals exclusively with dogs. The animal inspector is different from the animal control officer. So the animal inspector is the one who would come out and look at your horses, your cattle, and I will speak with her about having a list to give you when she comes out so that you know exactly what she's looking for.
Thank you. Yes, Kam.
That's the animal inspector that does that? Not the animal control? Okay, Mark Manoli, Boardman Street. Well, just, because it's, there's some, you know, vagueness here. The article allows the enforcement violation penalties associated with animal issues. That's rather broad. You say it's about dogs. Most of the, I read the Mass. General Laws on it, most of it is about dogs, yes, yes, it's true. Section 173, however, says a city or town may make additional ordinances or bylaws relative to the licensing and control of animals, not inconsistent with Section 136A to 174F inclusive. So that's kind of
But that's not what we're doing here. What we're doing here is just giving her the ability to do the enforcement.
That's Section 173, and if you look above 140, 151 to 174F, that's included.
But we're not doing any changes to our town's laws or regulations.
There's two positions that are in play here, and fortunately or unfortunately, the same person occupies both. So when you see Cassie, it's sometimes she's wearing her animal inspector hat. What we are talking about here is the animal control hat. This does not say animal inspector, it says animal control, and that's what it's limited to. Right now, as I understand it, people ask for enforcement on dogs and other animal control officer issues, and she does not have the authority in this town to do the job she needs to do if we, as town residents, expect her to get animal control officer issues under control. And this is what this section is seeking to do. It says nothing about the animal inspector hat that she wears, which deals with, you know, farms and the animals and so situated.
Just to make it maybe just a little clearer. The only animals that have to be licensed in the town of Sheffield are dogs. Cattle, horses, cats, any other animals are not required to be licensed.
Okay, any other questions? Yes.
Maria Nation, West Cell Road. Just to clarify, so this is dogs, primary licensing of dogs and running free of dogs or dog bites, it's just dogs, right?
Restrained. Any dog that's unrestrained, running at large, right, bites someone, people fail to license, don't have the rabies certificate, those types of issues.
Thank you. All right, well, seeing no one else at the microphone, I think we should prepare to vote, and the voting is open on Article Six. Voting is closed on the clickers. And the article has passed with substantial majority. Thank you. Our last article, to see if the town will vote to amend the general bylaws by adding Section 55.3 to Chapter 55, the treasurer collector, as falls, or as written in the warrant, or take any other action relative thereto.
Ms. Moderator, I move to amend the general bylaws by adding Section 55.3 to Chapter 55, Treasurer Collector, as written in the warrant, in accordance with MGL Chapter 60,
All right, the motion has been made and seconded, that Article Seven be approved. Are there any questions or perhaps Select Board explanation?
I'm sorry, could somebody explain this in clear English?
So what this article would do would allow our treasurer to enter into agreements with anyone who may be behind on their taxes, allowing them to make installment payments to get their taxes caught up, get all of the money back on the books in a faster fashion, maybe, than requiring it all to be paid at once. So it's faster, but it's also allowing people to be able to catch up.
Any other questions or comments on this article? All right, then we will prepare to vote with our clicker, and the vote Then we will prepare to vote with our clicker, and the voting is open. And the voting is closed. We'll get those results. Substantial majority passed. Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Before we close, I would like to congratulate you on running this meeting and keeping us civil.
Trial by fire. I want to thank everyone for coming. It's important town work. Yes, it gets difficult, a little bit tedious. Have a happy, healthy holiday season, and the meeting is adjourned.